Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Tonight we'll begin with prayer and pledge led by Councilwoman Brendan Moore.
Pay, please participate. Gracious heavenly Father, we come to you tonight asking you to watch over our city, to watch over our leaders, to watch over our workers, and to watch over our residents, Father. We ask that you bless this meeting, give us a clear mind to make a conscious decision that works for the good and the order of the community. These things we ask in your name, amen.
Amen. (Inaudible) (Inaudible)
Welcome to our distinguished guests from First Ward Community Center. Thank you and welcome. Glad that you are joining us today. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Mellon. Councilmember Tibbs. Councilmember Bench. Mayor Protem Clark. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Bryant. Councilmember Balls. Councilmember Humphries.
Here.
Mayor Browning.
Here.
We have nine members present, zero absent.
Okay. Remind the audience to remain quiet and refrain from speaking, cheering, booing, or rude or obnoxious behaviors. At this time, if you would simply reach into your pocket, grab your cell phones, bring them out for me, put them on silent or turn them off so they do not interfere with the council meeting. And that includes my council members sitting on both sides and myself who have had this happen to us, so we ask you to do that. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I want everyone to be aware that a revised agenda has been issued which adds consent agenda item 15 regarding a letter of agreement with Saginaw Arcadia LLC, a resolution regarding Oprahs at 107 South Washington and 100 North Washington Avenue, and removing a commission appointment. Also, the City's Waste Convenience Station is open the second Saturday of the month, and it's now with new hours. It will be 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon for city residents to dispose of items that curbside does not pick up, such as your building materials, and also for recycling for glass, plastic, and paper. The next service day with the new hours of 8:00 a.m. to noon is this Saturday, August 12th. And we have a proclamation this evening declaring August 11th through the 13th of 2017 as Saginaw African Cultural Festival Weekend.
Yes, and I would like to invite Dawn Hinton up to the podium, please. Dawn, do you have somebody with you, anyone with you?
I have nobody.
Okay. How many are here with you for the cultural festival? Please come up and support her by standing there alongside her. Please? Thank you. Okay. Dawn, it's my privilege and honor to present this proclamation, and the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the 49th Annual Saginaw African Cultural Festival will be held August 11th through the 13th, 2017, at Morley Park located at 2601 Le Pier Street in the city of Saginaw. And whereas the art is a recognized medium for transmitting cultural values and knowledge to bridge the gap between diverse ethnic groups, and whereas this unique festival continues a tradition of 49 years of fostering artistic and cultural exchange through the media of creative expression, and whereas this cultural exchange is a key element in breaking down stereotypes and bringing the city's various populations together, and whereas the Saginaw African Cultural Festival is a collaboration between a grassroots cultural organization and the city of Saginaw, community agencies, social organizations, and hundreds of dedicated volunteers, and whereas the Saginaw African Cultural Festival has served the city for 49 years to claim the title of the longest ongoing black arts festival in the nation, and whereas the festival offers a highlighted cultural consciousness and social awareness through guest speakers, entertainers, artists, exhibit contests, and educational workshops. Now therefore, I, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor of the city of Saginaw, here proclaim August 11th through the 13th, 2017, as Saginaw African Cultural Festival Weekend. In the city of Saginaw, urge all citizens of Saginaw to attend the 49th Annual Saginaw African Cultural Festival and join me in saluting the members of the Saginaw Black Cultural Alliance and the Saginaw African American Festival Committee for their contributions to making this outstanding festival a local institution and an integral part of the history and culture of Saginaw. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Saginaw to be affixed this seventh day of August in the year of our Lord, 2017. Signed, Dennis D. Browning, the mayor. Councilpersons, Mayor Protem Floyd Clark, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, John Humphries, John Mill, Brendan Moore, Demond L. Tibbs, and our city manager Timothy Morales. Congratulations, and if you would step forward to receive this for me, please. And we'll ask you to make a few comments for us, will you?
Absolutely. We are certainly appreciative of the recognition that we're receiving from our city council members and the city of Saginaw. We're really excited this year about our festival. We have a number of new activities that are occurring, and I have personally invited each and every council member to attend the festival formally through email, and I'm formally inviting you here. So I would love to see everyone there. Our opening ceremonies are Friday at 3:00. So we're going to have our elders, who are those who kind of advise our committee, we're going to be recognizing them, we're going to be pouring libations where we pay homage to our ancestors, and we would love to have you there to celebrate that peace with us. So if there's anything that we can do, feel free to call on us. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, our next order of business is personal appearances.
And for personal appearances, we begin tonight's business to welcome your thoughts and input. If you come to the podium, please introduce yourself and state your home address. To be helpful, let us know if you are speaking solely or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by our clerk, so be sure to cover your main points. Hearing from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak flowly and clearly so we don't miss what you have to say. Finally, since you are speaking as a representative of all citizens, we ask that you be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching SGTV, and to this council so that we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to the city staff. Madam Clerk, our first question.
First speaker this evening is Brandon Hosbeck.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, Mr. Manager, city staff, all the citizens that are here tonight. My name is Brandon Hosbeck. I'm vice president of the Saginaw Firefighters Local 102, proud to serve the citizens of Saginaw. Here tonight, I was asked to speak about the firefighters' union and what we do for the citizens and those who visit the city. People often think of the firefighters' union as obviously we work and we fight fires, but there's a lot of things we do off-duty that sometimes people don't realize. First thing is obviously through cash donations. We spend a lot of money. In fact, over the last three years, we've spent $16,134, and these are on local projects. Some of the projects I've listed here, the Coats for Kids program, many of you remember, we buy 100 coats every year for Saginaw schoolchildren. We go to a school, bring the fire truck, and it's a great experience. Thanksgiving and Christmas families, we always donate to a couple families during the holidays, Thanksgiving and Christmas. We give families a Christmas dinner, presents, things that they might not otherwise have. The Safe Kids Coats and Hats Drive, the 100 Club of Saginaw County, the SEIU Get Out and Vote campaign, trying to get the youth out to vote, which is obviously a huge important thing. We bought 100 teddy bears for children that are involved with fires, and we carry those teddy bears on our battalion chief rig anytime there's a child that their home is destroyed. It's a small little thing, but you try to put a smile on a kid's face. The Public Safety Millage, we obviously donated to that and did a lot of things for that. But it's more than just donations, it's also time. Our members spend a lot of their time off-duty doing things. We participated in the One Week One Street campaign, we've done that for numerous years now. The Riverfront and Ojibwe Cleanups, the Light Up the City campaign, we have on-duty personnel as well as off-duty show up and do those events. The Guns and Hoses Charity Game, this year it's going to be the Saginaw Fireworks that we help with that. That's coming up in December. The Children's Zoo, we have a garden that we do at the Children's Zoo that gets the firefighters' name out there. And the Public Safety Millage, once again, many of you that were on council at that time know that the firefighters were the boots on the ground. We had people from Flint, Ann Arbor, firefighters from all over as well as our own helping to get that passed, and we got it passed. And last but not least, the Neighborhood Associations, all the events that they do, the Adams Boulevard Picnic that's coming up, we'll have a ton of people there ready to defend our crown for the tug-of-war. So in conclusion, these are just some of the things that Saginaw Firefighters Union does off-duty, and we're proud to serve the citizens of Saginaw. We love our job, we also love being a part of the community, and we thank you for that opportunity.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mark Oberschmidt.
Good evening, city council. My name is Mark Oberschmidt. I live at 404 South Granger, lifelong Saginaw resident. I'm here tonight because I oppose spending $35.8 million on a new jail and the proposed closing of Harrison Street. At this point in time, with all the unfunded pension liability we have in Saginaw, the fact that the planned-on prisoners from Flint we would house for revenue that never materialized, jail is consistently well below capacity by about 100 inmates. Some crime in the city is down by up to 80% according to a recent Saginaw News article. The building is approximately 50 years old, new in the life of a commercially built, relatively new in the life of a commercially-built structure. The funny math, about 10 less officers needed to man the new building will pay the bond. My quick math shows it taking over 50 years to pay off the bond at that rate, just in time for a new building. I don't think our lawsuit-prone sheriff, we actually lay off 10 men, but just reassign them somewhere else so there'll be no savings, just a $35.8 million bond to pay. Closing Harrison Street would then force the traffic over to South Webster and South Granger in the middle of our historical district. I live in the 400 block of South Granger, and we don't want the additional traffic in the historical district. Building the proposed new jail would not improve the quality of life in Saginaw one bit. If you want to spend money, let's spend it to improve the quality of life by planting some trees, by investing in our neighborhood associations, and improving our image in general. Not building a new jail that is not essential and benefits no one. Thank you.
Mayor, our next order of business is the remarks of council.
And I remind council members, you have a five-minute limit, and we begin with the distinguished councilmember John Humphries.
Thank you, everyone, here in council chambers and at home watching on TV. First of all, to the firefighters, thank you for everything that you do. It is truly remarkable. I think we're blessed to have a good, strong firefighting department, good leadership, but especially those right on the front line. I remember working on the Public Millage, the Safety Millage, and working, and in some respects, it's the first time I met a number of the firefighters, and you really, truly did help make a difference. So I want to say thank you for all of that, share that with all of my friends over there, and having had lunch at the fire station, there is truth to that myth about firefighters cooking great meals. Mr. Oberschmidt, I certainly hope that you're going to take your comments regarding the jail to the county. We have a minimal role in that process. It is the county that ultimately makes the decision. But I appreciate and recognize your concerns. It is always difficult to balance the needs of the overall community with the needs of specific segments of that community. Looking forward to the festival, that ought to be fun, and I think that kind of covers what I've got to say tonight. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The mayor's been... Okay, good, good, good. First of all, I'd like to welcome everybody to the city council meeting this evening, especially the young people. It's really good to see young people come to the city council meeting to find out how your city operates. I'd like to mention too about the African American Festival at Morley School Grounds. I think it's a beautiful thing. I go every year, and I would advise everybody, all cultures, to come and see what's going on at the African American Festival. It's really a great event to see so many people there experiencing African Americans I'd like to mention too about the Brandon Hosbeck and your union. I'm a union member too, and our union members do a lot of things in our community besides just trying to get good wages and health and safety on our jobs. You know, America is a union, so I can't imagine what America would do if we didn't have unions here because they help all the employees get better wages, and we all need better wages on our job. I would hate to work in a shop that's not union. I happen to work with some bosses, and I'm telling you, if it wasn't for a union, I can't imagine working for these guys because they would definitely run you in the ground and just use you for your wages and don't want to pay you. So thank you, Brian, I appreciate what you're doing, and my wife is looking forward to you guys coming to the Neighborhood Association meeting at our neighborhood and teaching the kids about fire safety, so thank you again. I really don't have too much more to say this evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and thank you guys for joining us in council chambers and those who are watching at home. It's been a great couple weeks with the events that we've had in the city with Friday Night Live and Light Up the City. Laundrette Film Fest, that was canceled last night, but it will be rescheduled. And I can't stress the importance of neighborhood associations. We are seeing all over an overall decline in people who are attending our Neighborhood Association. It's very important, the last three that I visited to, we might have had less than 20 people, and I know it's summer, but if we all could make an attempt to get to our Neighborhood Association, that would be great. I just had a couple follow-ups, and I wanted to relay that, hopefully get some information. There's two citizens that contacted me this week about 1505 Union and 615 Mead Street. They're wondering what's going on, if we're going to proceed with demolition, so if we could follow up on that, that would be great. As well as two dumping sites, Felon near Ray Street and Emily near the Old Self-Serve Lumber. There's quite a bit of dumping, I can forward those photographs to the manager. Brandon, thank you so much for telling us a little bit more about what you guys do. I see you guys out there. Whether it's Beautification Day or during the holidays, you guys always make an attempt to get out there with the community, and it's really not broadcast as much as it probably should be, but you guys really do make an attempt, so thank you for what you guys do for us. But, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments for tonight.
All right. Who wants to get up more? Councilwoman. Good afternoon. First, I'd like to welcome everybody and thank everybody for taking time out of their busy schedule to come. For the students or the workers at First Ward Community Center, please don't make this your last time visiting us. Please, we need your input, we need you to come more often. So I thank you so much for coming. As for our public speakers, Brandon, always do whatever we asked, you know, and so it's not just Brandon, it's we can ask union members throughout the city, and they will come forward with anything that we ask them to do. The police, the firemen, the labor council, and so I just want to reach out and tell everybody thank you so much for being supportive of our city. Last week, I went, I had the opportunity to go to, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I need to thank my other public speaker. I need to thank you too, sir, and like Mr. Humphrey said, my cohort, that's really not on us, that's the county. We hear what you're saying, but we need to start filling into the county commissioners' chambers and start saying why we think and why we don't think. The other thing is, on Thursday, I had the opportunity to serve at CAC's annual picnic, community picnic. I must have served over 500 hot dogs, but it was so much fun to watch the young people in the community just engage and to take part in stuff. So my weekend been filled with going to Light Up the City, with Councilman Mills, even in the rain, we walked and asked community people and we have some of our other leaders, we walked in the rain. I'm encouraging everybody, if you can, to come out. On Wednesday, we will be at Reverend Campbell's Church, New Birth Ministry on Sheridan Street, and we'll be there from 5:30, and we take off walking at 6:30, but we got pizza pop and socialize, so if you are available, please come out and walk with us. I'd like to thank the mayor, the mayor did me a tremendous favor. On Saturday, even though he's our mayor, I sometime have to ask him for favors too. He went to the Gospel Fest at Ojibwe, and the citizens have been calling my phone, blowing up my phone, and I'm to tell you that the citizens, along with Dicky Hill, were so much honored to have your presence at that activity. We are getting ready to go off on a trip, and it's not a long trip, but we're going to an MML conference. I did go to a meeting on Saturday in the outskirts of Detroit to represent the city of Saginaw. We are, like we say all the time, we have great things getting ready to happen in this city, so everybody just hold on to your seat because we getting ready to take off. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, Tim, one thought.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everything I had to say has already been covered, so I'm getting past.
Okay, then we're going to go on to council.
Thank you. For the sake of brevity, I probably will pass as well.
Yeah, and we're going down to the council.
You will not be so lucky. I'd like to thank everyone who's here today, especially the students here from First Ward. It's great to see you here. I'm a board member there, I've been serving my second term now, and Michelle Greger, there's many people that make First Ward what it is, but Michelle Greger, Fred Harvey, Kevin Gregory, they did a good job for you guys, and you guys honored their effort by doing good things, and I just want to encourage you to keep up the good work. This past Sunday, I was at, I attended an NAACP meeting, Saginaw Future was present, and did a presentation on pursuing economic equity, and I just want to commend Ms. McCary and Mr. Miller for doing a good job in presenting to the group the economic developments and economic opportunities in the city to the NAACP. There was one visitor there from Community Ventures, and the discussion was about economic initiative to promote employment, and I guess I was just curious to know what, if anything, the city does to work in conjunction with that initiative, and if there was any policymaking, as a policymaking board, I was curious to know if there's any policy changes we can do to support that. We are experiencing a decline in crime, and I think a lot of it is due to initiatives that's outside of increased police patrol, and I believe what the Community Ventures do as far as finding employment for those who are recently released for incarceration and having difficulties finding employment is something that the city supports, and which should go a long, long way in curbing and continuing our decline in the crime rate. I'd like to thank Mr. Oberschmidt. My grandfather always had me listen to Paul Harvey, and you know, Mr. Harvey always said, and here's the rest of the story, Mr. Schmitt, you always provide the other side of the issue, and I appreciate that. I guess I was kind of curious to know, as one of our council members mentioned, about the minimal role that the city play. I know the county or the sheriff did a presentation to the board last meeting, and I guess I was just curious what exactly would that minimal role would be. I'd like to recognize the firefighters' union, a great example of community partners, you guys are always around, and not only that, you do a great job in protecting and serving the community. I guess I saw on Facebook and as well as the news where you assisted some, a woman who got in an accident in the Cathedral District, and you had to use the jaws of life to make sure her from the vehicle. You guys were very professional and patient. And I guess also that lead me to believe, I know we had some issues as far as traffic congestion and traffic safety, and sometimes the city does a traffic survey to see if anything needs to be done to curb speeding drivers, so I don't know if that was something that was done in that area, because I believe a lot of citizens there said that there is an issue with speeding over there, so I don't know if that was something that the city was considering doing or not. And I guess that's my five bullet points, Mayor.
You got it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things on our agenda tonight that to me seem related. One is a resolution about transferring obsolete property rehabilitation certificate, and I find that a very hopeful item because that means the project involving the Eddy and the Bancroft Buildings has achieved enough success someone new wants to buy it and wants to pursue transfer of those certificates. And the related item is where we're going to accept a piece of property and payment for demolition and rebuilding costs we incurred, and I think the important part there is the potential then that that building will have due to its proximity to this other project. So hopeful on both fronts. Sadly, the private owner on the one is not able to make payment to us, but if we're able to put that with the right developer, I think it could work out well. The firefighters' union, I wanted to bring up one of the subjects, one of the community involvements you had, you failed to mention. Two of your firefighters were with us at the 100 Men Who Cook this winter, and very high-profile spot for you to be in, so. And something I'm probably going to be mentioning for a couple of council meetings in the future, it's been mentioned previously, two meetings ago, we talked about the need for citizens to come out and serve on our boards and commissions. This is a continuing need, I'm going to only mention two of them just because they impact many areas the city is involved in. We need citizens on the Human Planning Commission, and that is done by your neighborhood. You truly represent the people in your neighborhood if you get appointed to the Human Planning Commission. We have a number of vacancies, and those need to be filled. The busy season for that commission is coming up this winter. You work on the Community Development Block Grants. You help decide how this city will spend usually close to $2 million on that one commission. The second one is the City Planning Commission. This has a broad purview, whether we're going to recommend closing streets, size of buildings, things like that. things like that. And we had a meeting about a week and a half ago, we couldn't make a quorum. They could not actually transact the business they need to transact on that commission due to a couple of absences and a couple vacancies. So please check with the city clerk in her office. She has the applications to get on these boards and commissions. Some of them are mayoral appointments. Mr. Dennis Browning will sign off on you. Some are appointed by the city manager, Mr. Morales. Please, please join us in serving Saginaw and making it work as well as it can. That's my comments.
All right. Well, thank you.
See, the two council members gave me their five minutes each, so I have 15 minutes now. But we won't do that. So I, once again, thank you, First Ward students, for joining us. Very proud of the way that you interact with each other and people in our community. And I saw you firsthand at One Week One Street out there, your interaction with the community, and you need to be commended for that. You do a super job out there. So, Mr. Overschmidt, glad to hear from you. Very interested in hearing for more members from the association, Neighborhood Association that, that directly is, is right next door or within that ones. I'd like to hear some more from Neighborhood Associations around there, and just more input. That is a county project that the county does, and so the only thing that they're asking us to at this point is the road closure, and you bring up some very good points. And so, like to follow up with that. Saginaw Firefighters, boy, we can't say enough about that. Council members, each of you have received an invitation from the chief. And I know last year, I think John Humphries, you attended that fire ops?
I was a present.
You were present?
Yes.
Okay. And Brenda was there cutting cars open. So the invitation is out for us again. I have RSVP'd already. That's for a Saturday from 9:00 to 3:00, so it's not a workday. It's Saturday from 9:00 to 3:00, so please, please consider going out there, and so I think that'd be great. I did attend the Gospel Fest to present the proclamation to Vicky Hill. I will admit that my wife and I brought our lawn chairs, and we had a lot of great things to eat and some great music, and it was a wonderful event there on Jibway Island. And also, looking forward to this coming weekend for our Saginaw African Cultural Festival. Again, it's a wonderful opportunity for our citizens, all our citizens, to take part in that. And I know we mentioned on all the arts and activities going on, but I'm going to tell you, you're not going to find a better place to get something to eat than at that festival. I'm telling you, it's, I have to go on a diet for the next year after that, but I love that, so. With that, we're done with council remarks. Madam Clerk?
Next order of business is the reports from the manager.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the students from First Ward Community Center for attending this evening. It's great to see them, and a pretty big group that they brought over to meet with the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and the clerk and I, and learn about local government. Also, we had students from Tokushima here last week that the mayor hosted, and the mayor pro tem as well. And I'd like to thank Debbie Powell and Vicky Davis in my office for coordinating that. They do a lot of work on that, so it's appreciated. A comment regarding the pollinator plots that many of you may have seen. If there are any issues with those plots or questions that you receive from community members, please direct them to the Saginaw Basin Land Conservancy. A lot of those are still in, in the growth and in-growth phases, so they do a lot of community outreach, and they're willing to talk to any, any citizens. So if you get questions, please send them their way. We'll have the contact information if you need that, but they're out there fundraising to work on these plots, so they're working hard on them. We appreciate their work, and we want to make sure they have an opportunity to talk to the community if there are issues with those vacant lots. Also, would like to let the rest of council know that the mission/vision statement team is still working hard on that. They have about half of the mission part done, and they'll be working on the visioning part of the statement this week, and hopefully we'll be able to bring that to full council in the next, within the next few meetings to present that to you as well. We also have a notice that Chief Ruth sent over regarding the Justice Assistance Grant. So there is a new DOJ JAG funds, which assists in supporting local criminal justice law enforcement initiatives. The Saginaw County Sheriff's Department and the Saginaw City Police Department negotiate 2017 funding distribution totaling $67,179. And there is opportunity to make comments on that prior to September 7th. If you'd like to contact Sergeant Jim Hoag at the Sheriff's Department. I don't anticipate this grant being split or distributed any way different than what we've been doing for the last several years. And finally, we talk about downtown, as council member Milne did. First, I just wanted to let council know that we have been working with Delta College. I know you don't see a lot in the news, but they're in the planning process for their downtown facility, and most recently, they've been meeting with City Engineering Streets and Water and Sewer. So they are progressing on that project and look to be breaking ground next spring. So hopefully about the time the farmer's market is finishing up, that will be breaking ground. So it's another good downtown project, and as Councilman Milne mentioned, we have added an item to the agenda, two items to the agenda, but first, we have some guests here. So I'd like to invite Mr. Miller up to talk about OPRA's and the possibility of transferring that for one of our downtown developments.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilman Morales. I'm known as Saginaw Future, your economic development. And I'm here tonight to give you a brief overview of Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act process, better known as Oprah, as well as an update on an important project in downtown So this is the snapshot of what the Oprah is. It essentially gives a community a mechanism to freeze the existing taxable value on the designated facility for up to 12 years. By freezing the taxable value, it provides an incentive for the developer to make a significant improvement to a building without increasing the property taxes on the building. The Bancroft and Eddy is probably the best example of how well an Oprah program can work. This has been one of the most important projects for downtown Saginaw in many years. The developers invested over $7 million in the renovations of these two historic buildings. They added 150 market-rate residential units to the downtown, and I'm not sure anyone could have predicted how quickly the buildings filled up. The city manager and I met with the owners of the property very early on in the development, and they were clear about their strategy for their properties. The company typically purchases dilapidated buildings that are underperforming, invests in their redevelopment, and works to make them successful. Once they are successful and operating profitably, they look to sell them to companies that specialize in the long-term operations of apartment complexes. We were contacted a couple of weeks ago by the developers, who had been approached by a Michigan-based company about a potential acquisition of the properties. If you'll recall, at the March 4, 2013 Saginaw City Council meeting, council approved a 12-year Oprah certificate for 107 South Washington, better known as the Bancroft Building, and 100 North Washington, better known as the Eddy. Just as a reminder, because of the Oprah, these properties are on a separate tax roll and are not subject to the city's tax cap, and as such, are essentially a separate revenue stream for the city of Saginaw. The reason why I'm here today before you tonight is because the city manager, Saginaw Future, and the city attorney have been working with the new prospective owners on the mechanics of a possible transfer of the two Oprah certificates on the buildings. Section 13 of Public Act 146 states, "An obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate may be transferred and assigned by the holder of the certificate to a new owner of the rehabilitated facility if the qualified local governmental unit approves the transfer after application by the new owner." The key phrase in that sentence is "new owner," and we have been round and round about that phrase over the past week or so. The certificate cannot be transferred until the property officially changes ownership. The Oprah certificates are very important for the valuation of the property to the new ownership and to the lending institution financing the purchase. The resolution before you tonight does not approve the Oprah certificate transfer. It's simply a resolution of support that demonstrates your willingness to consider a new application by the new owners at a future meeting. The current owners have had other transactions with this new company in the past and found them to be good stewards of their property. And while we do not have a relationship with the new entity, we hope that this will be the start of a good working relationship in the future. And incidentally, we, we did do a little bit of due diligence. We called around to a, a number of our neighboring communities to check on, not that we didn't trust the new ownership, but as, as Councilman Tibbs pointed out, it is good to do some due diligence. Now, it's impossible to know what the future holds, but they have a very robust portfolio of properties. And as the Bodners, who are the current owners, have admitted, it takes a special sort of company for the long-term operation and maintenance of these types of facilities. And I don't want to take up too much time, so we do have some representatives from the company that can tell you a little bit about the company and why this is such an important thing, this resolution of support. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, ladies and gentlemen, city council. My name's Bradley Scoble. I'm an attorney. I represent Roco Real Estate. I'm not going to take up much of your time, because Mr. Miller did a wonderful job of presenting why we are here tonight. I'm just going to elaborate very briefly and go over the, the issues that we have had with this deal. Mark and Carol Bodner are sellers. This is the second time we've purchased a property. Roco has purchased a property from them. And everything with the purchase is driven on the income that the property receives. The whole purchase price, the ability to acquire, financing, is, is all driven. And obviously, the transfer of the Oprah certificates are, are very important to that, because if they are transferred, there's a certain value to the property. If they're not transferred, there's a different value to the property. So the quirk that we ran into is how the statute is written. It says a new owner has to apply. Well, we have a contract. We were actually originally going to close this Thursday, but then we had this, this issue come up. We've been a little bit delayed, but we should have a closing very shortly. But the reason why this resolution is very important is basically because we can't apply until we are the owner. Once we are the owner, we will submit the application. However, our lender is concerned that if these were not transferred, that we are paying too much for the building, and they wouldn't lend what they, what, what they are planning on lending. So we've been working with Tom Miller, and I know he's been working with the city manager and the city attorney very hard, and it's the one reason why I wanted to talk, is I wanted to, I wanted to mention that, to thank everyone here, and especially Tom Miller has, has been just a pleasure to work with. City manager, who I, I haven't spoken with, but I know he's been going back and forth. We are a relationship-based entity. We want to form a relationship with the city, and you guys have, have gone far and above and beyond to work with us to try and get something that makes our lender comfortable, that once we actually purchase, we'll be able to get to transfer the certificates. In any event, that is the whole purpose for this, to kind of get a, a pre-approval, but this does not actually approve it. We will come back as soon as we purchase. We will file our absolute final application. That being said, we have several members of principals of Roco Real Estate here. Tonight, standing next to me is David Coleman. I would like him to go give you a little bit about Roco Real Estate, and he was here to answer any of the questions or concerns that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you all very much for your time. My name's David Coleman, one of the principals from Roco Real Estate. Our firm was started five years ago with the investment philosophy of acquiring properties exactly like Bancroft and Eddy, existing cash-flowing, multifamily properties in good markets like Saginaw with a long-term hold strategy. So unlike a lot of other owners, when we buy an asset, we are planning on holding it for 30-plus years. We truly invest in our properties, invest in our communities, build relationships with our communities, and look to be very good partners with community representatives, et cetera. Saginaw is a new market for us. We own a lot of other properties in Michigan. We own in total 110 properties across 13 states throughout the United States. So we have built a sizable business, but we're always looking to really grow and build our presence in Michigan. We are based in Bloomfield Hills, as I said, so about an hour, 15-minute drive from our office to here tonight. We have a deep team in Michigan with regional managers, facility operators, and our corporate office. So we work very closely, our corporate office, with our onsite staff to ensure that our properties are kept in peak condition, and especially this historic building, an absolute gem in downtown Saginaw. We don't take the responsibility lightly, and we will do everything in our power to make you guys proud of an asset that's so important to, to this community.
Council members, any questions? Council members? Councilman Michael Ball?
Good evening, sir. Thank you for...
I'm sorry, council. I just, you have some information, if I can approach it.
Right, right, Mr. Clerk?
Just, just a thing. It's no problem.
Okay. I was wondering, what other type of investments do you guys make around your properties to make it, you know, a nice place? What else do you do?
Yeah, so very good question. As an organization, we've created a foundation called Roco Cares, which invests in local charities in, in areas and communities where we do business. So that's one. In addition, we do a lot of community events at our properties. One that comes to mind is last week, we have built a partnership with Weight Watchers. We are friendly with the Florine Mark, who is one of the founders of Weight Watchers, and we have Weight Watchers events at our properties. So a representative from Weight Watchers will come, and they will invite community members to come and learn about eating healthy and living healthier lives, so on and so forth. And, you know, for our, for our residents, we do community events all the time. We try to make their living experience as best as possible. We pride ourselves on being the most resident, customer-focused property management company, not only in Michigan, but in the country. So it's really, we want to make sure our residents are taken care of, treated right, and also engage the community to come to our property, be a part of it, and also give money where there's an opportunity to do that.
I know that, I've heard about your company before, but I have a quick question. Is this going to change our look? Is this going to change? Because right now, the martini bar is a hot project for us, and so is the restaurant with the mayor's breakfast sandwich. So my concern is, are people, are we keeping, do you plan to keep our same staff? I mean, are you going to upgrade this? Are you going to do what you're going to do? Are you bringing jobs?
No, the, so the, the plan is absolutely to keep the onsite staff. As, as Bradley mentioned, we have a relationship with the sellers. We've acquired a property from the sellers before. They do a great job in renovating, but they're not long-term holders. We, we are long-term owners and holders, so we come in, we aren't looking to make changes. We, we believe the sellers did a phenomenal job with the rehab of the project and building out a great staff. Lisa, the property manager, is truly an all-star. She's one of the best I've seen in the business. And our plan is to absolutely keep the onsite, onsite staff and continue to build out, because there are two vacant spaces in Bancroft and Eddy. -in Bancroft and Eddy. So, we are aggressively going to look for new commercial, you know, commercial owners to come in and build out a space. So, we will keep the four. We'll look to bring two new ones in and have a fully occupied commercial spaces at the property. But no, no big changes, other than continuing to upkeep the property, make upgrades, renovations where we see fit. But, you know, we want to improve the asset over time.
Okay.
Is your company focused in any particular areas such as urban or suburban apartment complexes? Is a single building like this with 150 units in your wheelhouse? Or are you usually doing multiple-building suburban complexes?
Yeah. So, we do own 110 properties across 13 states, from senior housing to student housing to, you know, mid-rise, high-rise, garden-style. So, we really do have a very diversified portfolio. We have 500 employees across the country that specialize in these different areas. So, for this property in particular, we have the expertise in-house to manage 150 units in downtown Saginaw. Across our portfolio, just for context, we own 20,000 apartment units across those 110 properties. So, while 150-unit property is very large and a massive undertaking, we do absolutely have the experience and economies of scale and the breadth to take on this property and successfully manage it.
Thank you.
Mayor Protam?
My question is sort of addressed to see where you have gone with your due diligence, and it goes to the question, have you looked at our ordinances to see what you might have to comply with regarding license requirements, maintenance, all those issues? I mean, I'm just sort of curious if what you've done there.
No, it's a great question, and we have. Maybe I'll let Bradley speak to this one, I'm sorry.
Well, just the standard due diligence we have, we are aware of one ordinance issue regarding a stairwell that we have looked into, and it's something that for the last two and a half years, the city have been working with the Bodners to come to a resolution on whether or not it should be constructed out of wood or out of steel. We have secured in our purchase agreement that that is going to be taken care of as soon as we purchase. We are going to get that taken care of. That is the only thing in our due diligence that really came out as the biggest ordinance issue that was up, because that is theoretically a continuing violation, which I know, again, the city and the Bodners have been working together. But that was, that was the biggest issue other than-
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Gentlemen, we want to thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Presentation, and I also wanted to give the city attorney a moment to comment on item 15 that was added, which is property transfer for Saginaw Arcade, which is another downtown property that the city attorney's been working on for quite some time. So, we'll let her have just a moment to explain to you the process that we're doing now.
I think everyone's fairly familiar with the fact that this is a building that a couple of years ago, the back wall fell off of. The city of Saginaw had to step in and make emergency repairs, and those emergency repairs totaled a little over a quarter million dollars. That gets invoiced to the property owner, which in this case is an LLC. That LLC has all along indicated that the only asset that it owns is the property. There are no other assets or cash that can be looked at to try to pay its debts to the city. Because of that, we've been working with the property owner and its attorney in trying to come to some sort of resolution. Ultimately, what happens if that invoice hangs out there? It'll lean to the property taxes. Those property taxes are unlikely to be paid in that amount, and because of that, three years down the road, it'll get foreclosed upon and transferred to either the city or the county. In this particular scenario, the property owner has agreed to transfer the property to the city immediately. In fact, the deed is already signed and entered into an agreement with the city that would forgive that debt in exchange for that deed to the property. This is beneficial to the city for a number of reasons. One is there are other structural issues with the property that need to be remedied and will cause further deterioration if not remedied in the not-so-distant future, obviously. If we're not the owner of that property, we can't step in and take those steps. Also, it provides the city an opportunity to acquire property in the last contiguous block in the city to try to market and develop.
I'm curious, what does that do any worth?
I mean, was it even worth the quarter million dollars? We put a quarter million dollars in to fix it. What is it worth? Is it worth a half a million, a quarter million? What is it worth now?
I think close to that number now.
Yeah. So, really, though, as we talked about when we were doing that, the demolition cost would have been higher for the city than the cost of repairing the back wall, inasmuch as that, I believe the initial minimum quote was somewhere around $225,000 for demolition, with a caveat that it would be substantially more because of the way that buildings were constructed in the late 1800s. So, this was the most economical way to make the building safe, which is, our obligation is to make the property safe. However, there are other issues with that property currently that if they're not remedied, then the property will be worthless in three years when we would receive it through taxes. So, given that the current owner has this outstanding invoice of approximately $250,000, we don't believe that they're going to remedy those other issues in the course of the three years either. So, that would probably give us a building that would, again, be in the point where it would either need to be demolished or repaired at significant cost to the city. So, our goal now is to try to have the building now and get it in the hands of a developer prior to that substantial additional cost that would be necessary in a few more years.
How much is that?
The cost right now?
The substantial amount of repair that may need to be done, how much is it going?
Well, initially, right now, the minimum thing that you'd have to do is put a roof on the building, which we asked the Spence Brothers to get an informal quote, and it was anywhere from $10,000 to $20,000 to do that. If we, obviously, if we were going to do it, we'd have to get a formal quote, follow our own process, and get that done. So, we'd have more firm numbers, but our hope is that we can have developer interested in it before we would have to do that. So, we haven't been just standing pat, waiting for this to happen either. We've been talking to developers. We had a developer actually go through it initially when the back wall was down, and that's really the only one that wasn't interested in taking on the projects. None of the other ones have really closed it off, and I think we could have some interest there.
Thousand dollars, that's not substantial, so-
If nothing's done now, there's the potential for something as catastrophic as what already occurred.
Right. So, if you don't put the roof on, right now, if you go in that building, when it's not raining, it's like a waterfall. So, the water's continuously coming in through the old roof. If that happened, if that continued for three years, there's probably not much left inside of that building.
So, we're looking at fixing the roof. Let me ask the honest question. Is this going to be a building that we might get a nibble for? That's right, you have to drink water behind that one.
It could be a development agreement building, because similar to the Bancroft building, it's going to take a lot of money to put into it to make it worthwhile, but I think council has expressed the desire to save that type of architecturally significant historical building, particularly downtown, in the last complete block. We just see another building come down due to neglect, you know, primarily due to neglect, for lack of a better word, a few weeks ago. So, if we can get this in the hands, and whether we get money back or not, to save the building and make it useful in that block, I think is a great potential for the city.
So, John Stempel, once we do this work, is it going to be marketable?
The building has been, and Tim did a great job explaining. Tim walked through the building with me shortly after the wall was built. There's a lot of things that need to be done. It's sat vacant with no heat, no power for five years. The roof's been leaking for at least that long. But the few developers that we did take through it could certainly see the potential, and it's not, not that the building is falling down. The roof structure was replaced probably 20 years ago with a steel roof structure, which is very solid. The only part of it is the membrane on top is leaking, so that's kind of an easy fix. The rest of it is more or less making it a place where people want to be, and, you know, it's been wet and starting to stink a little bit, but ripping all the surfaces, the finished surfaces out of the building and replacing them, it could be a viable building again.
So, Roco, we may have another building. Once we do our work, we may have another adventure for us. That's all. Thank you so much, John.
Thanks.
Repair work to the back wall. How did that tie into, or did it tie into any of the existing roof?
The roof is actually parallel with the wall that fell. There were two supporting beams that tied into that wall that held up the old roof, which is underneath the new steel structure. So, we just had to support those two beams. Other than that, it's, it didn't carry anything.
Someone mentioned, right now, it looks like a waterfall if it rains into the building?
The, what's happening is the part of the roof that's toward the front-
Right.
-is leaking, which was not the affected area from the-
Oh.
-structural collapse. It comes through the upper roof onto the lower roof, which slopes to the back wall. So, all of that water carries back and then just falls to the floor two stories down.
Okay.
Understand, too, we can't, you know, you'd like to go in and just take care of all the problems while you're there, but remember, we're working on somebody else's building.
That was the emergency repair.
And we can only do it to make it safe. Safe for the people that are adjacent, so that it, so-
Okay. Thank you.
Two different buildings that have common wall or shared wall, one of which is quite old and quite architecturally unique, and could be really something special if rehabilitated. And that's the one that's in the greater state of disrepair, and immediately adjacent to it is another building that is not anywhere near in the same state of disrepair, correct?
Sure. They are considered one address. There is, at some point in history, they did connect the two spaces, so they are treated as one building. But yes, the one where the wall collapsed was significantly worse than the other side.
Now, I understand, too, that there's a Mark and Carol Bodnar that might be coming into some money. Has there been any contact with them? Or maybe Roco Real Estate? Is that what it was? Roco?
Boy, do we have a deal for you.
You notice how I throw out how it could be a really architecturally unique building, gentlemen? Thank you.
A question, is that two buildings essentially that are joint that we're going to be receiving if we accept this?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not just the arcade building?
Correct.
But the building next to it as well?
Yes.
Okay. I understand that from a description standpoint, but from a facade standpoint, it's actually two separate structures. Okay. Thank you.
I may be oversimplifying this, but the bottom line is that we're just attempting to put one continuous block on the market, because we believe it's more attractive to market that way, and we are able to put it on the market faster by acquiring the property in this fashion.
Sure, and we're protecting our $250,000 investment that will continue to deteriorate unless we move quickly.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John, and then one final thing I forgot to mention, that Councilman Tibbs asked about community ventures. We do work with community ventures through Saginaw Future. In fact, Joanne Creary was instrumental in putting that program in place in the state, and as was, Mike Finney was the director of MEDC. Some of you may know Mike. He used to work in the city when that program was instituted. Employers in Saginaw hired more people through the program than any city in the state, including Detroit. And 20% of those hired are ex-offenders, and there've been over 1,500 total hires, all chronically unemployed throughout the state. And in the city, or in our region, Next Year and Morley use the program extensively, and Covenant is also a prime user of community ventures. So, if you're interested in that program, I think Joanne did talk a little bit about that when she did the Saginaw Future presentation, but Joanne is very knowledgeable about that. If you have any questions, we can always set you a time to meet with her and get any information you'd like. So, with that, that concludes the management update.
And for our students, you are now at consent agenda on your agenda there with you. And Madam Clark, is that where we're at?
Yes.
The agenda's been available at City Hall and on the city's website and on SGTV Channel 191. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
They moved and supported.
Are there any exceptions? Are there any exceptions? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, we are now at reports from boards, commissions, and committees, and appointment of board and commission members.
Does any council members have any reports from any of your boards or commissions you'd like to share at this time? Councilwoman Brenda?
I don't have a report. I just want to know about one commission, and I should have done the drawing. I'll do it at the end, write new stuff, because I wanted to get a report from Saginaw Public Library-
Okay.
...where they are, so I'll do it at the end. I'm sorry.
We have two appointments then? You're going to bundle? I need a motion to approve items one and two.
They're moved and supported.
Is there any other comments? Being none? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
We are now at resolutions. We have one this evening. It's supporting a future transfer request of an obsolete property rehabilitation certificate located at 107 South Washington and 100 North Washington from Bancroft Project Saginaw LLC.
I need a motion to adopt.
They're moved and supported.
Is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Our next order of business is motion and miscellaneous business. We do have one listed, is to designate official representative of the city and the alternate for the Michigan Municipal League MML Meeting.
And I need a motion for the designate. Your mayor and Mayor Protam are going to be attending the MML, and the proper protocol would be the mayor would be the one to vote, and the Mayor Protam would be the alternate. So, I need a motion from the board, from, is that, they moved for it? Is that correct? Is that all right? Okay. They moved and supported. Any other discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Are there any other motions and miscellaneous?
Any other motions or miscellaneous business? We have, Councilwoman Brenda, more?
I just wanted to ask the city manager. I forgot to speak about it during my speak time. Is there any way that we can get the Saginaw Library in, so we can get an update on what's going on with them?
Yeah, we'll contact them and see if they can send a representative to talk about their projects.
Because we have some citizens who are concerned with some issues, so if you can do that, I sure would appreciate it.
Any other business before council? When moved and supported, do adjourn. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, we adjourn.